And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, communicable with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, I'd like to facilitate the program move section nine point five up after section four point one. Can I get a motion to accept that agenda as amended?
Still moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Dr. Harrison, but I do want to say though, for the first time, we are coming to you live from the Dr. Scott Mosenball.
Very good, very good night, very good night. And with Dr. Mo as a part of our theme, I do want to acknowledge that on Saturday was our high school graduation and as Mr. Grados indicated earlier in his remarks in the prior program that we had 168 wonderful graduates as we celebrated the class of two thousand thirteen. Before a crowd of about twelve, thirteen hundred folks, we want to extend our congratulations to all of our students and their families and wish our students best luck as they move forward on from Irvington and wish them best in all their future endeavors. We also are, this time of year is filled up with a number of moving up ceremonies. We had a wonderful ceremony today at Dow's Lane and were entertained by our students singing and recitation of poetry. It was really a wonderful day. Tomorrow night, we have the opportunity of celebrating our middle school students and Thursday morning, of course, Main Street School, and I want to extend my congratulations to each of those classes on their completion of another successful school year. Last night, the district hosted its first ever technology think tank. This was a wonderful event that brought together approximately fifty educators, parents, technology professionals, and students to initiate dialogue regarding the role of technology in our students' education. I do want to commend Dr. Core for doing a wonderful job in facilitating this great event, which focused on three different areas. And first and foremost was teaching and learning. There was a lot of discussion on professional learning and our technological infrastructure. We collected volumes of ideas and questions that will be reviewed in the near future. This experience represents a first step in our process to provide more meaningful technology-related learning experiences for all of our students. Once all this information has been collated, we'll begin to talk about next steps. But I think what's important is we begin to think about long-range planning for our district that we've already started to thinking about the importance of technology and the role that it must have in all of our students' education. As we know, we're heading towards summer and our next board meeting is on July second, where in the board will adopt the meeting calendar for the upcoming school year. So as we're heading into the summer, certainly want to encourage everyone in the community to stay connected and informed. Just because summer break is here in the district doesn't mean that we stop working on the board level and the administrative level. So we encourage everyone to please continue to attend board meetings, watch them on television. And of course, if there's any important news to announce, we will make every effort possible to reach our community. And finally, some thoughts on the school year and recognizing that there were some challenges this year. Difficult situations ranging from superstorm Sandy and the horrific events in Newtown, Connecticut. However, the wonderful Irvington School community rose to the occasion and rallied around each other and those in need in each of those events. Despite those challenging times, we enjoyed a wonderful year. Certainly a year that was highlighted by numerous examples of greatness that is Irvington. I think of the many student performances ranging from those that were performed in classrooms to those in the theater. Those activities on the playground and to the state finals in athletics and some of our student athletes that were competing at national level competitions this past weekend. In our classrooms, we witnessed students reading independently for the first time and then saw students competing at a national level in the academic challenge in model UN teams. Maybe even more importantly, we witnessed our students develop on a daily basis. We saw countless acts of random kindness and our students reaching out to other communities to lend a hand. As we talked about throughout this evening already, Irvington is a special place. We have so many partners to thank from the village to the Board of Education to the PTSA and the Ed Foundation. But we cannot exclude the hundreds of parents and community members that have been a part of our journey and made this a memorable year for each of our students. Earlier tonight, we've acknowledged the careers of a number of staff members who dedicated years of passion to our students' development. But we also have to thank each person who works in our schools for their time, energy, and their love of educating children in Irvington. So my personal applause to all of our staff members for your dedication. It's been an amazing year. Personally, I want to thank everyone for your support and wisdom that contributed to our collective success. But as we look forward to our future, I recognize that we have much work to do. And I'm proud to be on this journey with such an amazing community. And I extend my best wishes for a wonderful summer to everybody in the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I turn this over to Mrs. Kerner, I was not at the prior meeting, so I want to extend a welcome to the board, to Mr. Montgomery. We look forward to your insights and working with you and be sure that as the newest board member, we will make sure that you will get as many committee appointments. And it will get all the summer work you need. We're happy to load you up.
I'm looking forward to the hazing. But I'll be talking through the bullion.
Exactly right. But welcome, welcome to the board. Now I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Kerner for recognition of the outgoing PTSA and IEF presidents.
We as a board just recognize that there's some work that goes on on a day-to-day on a school level from the PTSA, start with the PTSA and, you know, from the grade-level parents to the faculty to, you know, running all of the events and the activities and really just supporting the teachers and the staff and the district overall. So, you know, in recognition of all that you do and to say thank you for your term as president, we, I supposed to buy flowers, but I forgot. So you will be getting flowers just like tomorrow or the next day. But we just wanted to say thank you for everything you do and for really making the schools just so much more richer and so much of a better place. So thank you. You know, Laine is not at the meeting right now, but we just wanted to thank her as well. And, you know, the IEF plays a slightly different role than the PTSA, whereas they're not involved on a day-to-day basis. The, you know, the funds they raise and the donations they make and the support that they do to enrich the everyday learning of the kids and to provide opportunities that the kids will take with them forever and remember for life is incredible. So we wanted to also thank Laine for her time as president of the IEF and I hope for flowers too.
And we are happy to continue taking money from the IEF. I guess moving on to, thank you, moving on to section nine point five, Dr. Harrison?
Tonight, we have, and I have, the distinct pleasure of recommending the appointment of a new probationary special education teacher, but someone that is not entirely new to the Irvington School District. Caroline Lahoski has been working with us for a number of months in the middle school and been serving our students extremely well. And we certainly wanted to, just as we acknowledged everyone else this evening, acknowledge Caroline, who is in the audience tonight, and invite Scott and David to say a few words on our behalf before we introduce her.
So Caroline, who's with us tonight, as Dr. Harrison said, is currently finishing up at the time as a sixth-grade special education lead replacement teacher. The need is coming to an end in just a few days. However, Caroline's time is not coming to an end, thankfully for us. Caroline has jumped into very big shoes and has impressed her colleagues, her students, and parents of those students immensely ever since she walked through our door. Her command of logistical techniques, her ability to plan and design instruction in a way that meets the needs of every kid, you know, regardless of where they fall on the ability scale or where they are in terms of their current understanding of knowledge, is nothing short of impressive. I've been, you know, so thankful that in a lead replacement search, we will find someone and even more thankful that we have a position that we can offer on a permanent basis. She will add a tremendous amount to IMS. She's an enthusiastic part of our ongoing professional learning. She's added to that. Again, it's not every day that someone comes in on a lead replacement basis and can, you know, help move the learning of people forward, and she's done that. So I feel like I'm putting a little bit of pressure on her right now, but, you know, it's all good stuff. And we're very thankful of her. So congratulations to Caroline.
I would certainly echo everything that David said. And I just add that Caroline is also certified at the elementary level. And there was a little bit of a cycle war that went on between elementary and the middle school as to where her could be placed. And I just sat back like that. I went either way, wanting to learn my department. She's, everything David said, she's a wonderful teacher. The fact that her, one of her co-teachers, Amy, came tonight to support her and tell us how good a co-teacher she's been as well as a teacher in her own right. I've seen amazing things happen in her classroom and for kids, and, you know, that's what we're here for. So I'm very thrilled to have her as part of the team and look forward to, you know, someday when we're having her retirement party.
Well, again, I guess we should now make it formal. Can I get a motion to approve the appointment of Caroline Lahoski as a special education teacher? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, five zero.
Caroline, I want to give you the opportunity to say a word or two if you would like, or just to stand up and say hello is fine.
Hello, everyone. Throughout the few months that I've been here in Irvington, it's very true what Mr. said, that it is an incredibly special place. And it's evident through the interactions with students, fellow teachers, administrators, parents. And I just look forward to just building a home in this community and just becoming a better teacher each and every single day so that the children benefit in the best way possible. So I'm just so thankful to be here. Special night tonight.
Great night, great night so far. Let's keep it going. Okay, before moving on to the business agenda, is there anyone in the community who would like to make comments on topics that appear on the agenda? Seeing none. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I would like to pull out, and if anyone else in the board has any, but initially seven point six, seven point seven, and nine point nine through nine twelve inclusive. Nine point nine, I think it's nine point nine through nine thirteen. Sorry, nine thirteen inclusive.
Are those to be pulled out for a discussion?
Yes, yeah, separate discussion of handling department consent agenda.
Because there may be one or two that I would want to not vote on.
Understood. Yeah, no, what we'll do is we'll vote on it initially too.
There are things I haven't been involved in.
Of course, yeah.
Pull those out before the vote?
Well, yeah, so I'd like a motion to pull those out of the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd now like a motion to approve the consent agenda without section seven point six, seven point seven, and nine point nine through nine thirteen inclusive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So let's move on now to, I guess it's going to order, is that fine? Section seven point six. This is regarding a retreat that the Board of Education has planned. I know this year we did two dates of retreat.
Sure. You skipped over seven point four. That would be me.
Yep, I did that two weeks ago as well.
Sorry, yeah, you know what? That's right. We should have pulled that out as well. Seven point four really is.
No, just the committee report.
Yep. Okay, so why don't we do that first? There really wasn't anything to approve. It was just your report. But you have our implicit approval of your report.
Okay.
It's funny when you go away, you get a little rusty, huh?
I'll tell you, Phil. They snuck it in on you.
The committee met, we've met so many times recently, I'm forgetting the date. June twelfth, I think it was, okay. We reviewed any outstanding projects. We approved some repairs, lighting to the high school, repairs to the exterior doors at the high school, middle school campus, and replacing certain hardware on the interior fire doors at the high school. We discussed summer work, ground maintenance, summer work at the various schools, field specifically, our favorite topic. Gary shared with the committee, he wanted to make us aware that because of vacations and stuff, he might be short with custodial labor this summer. And the committee was made aware that a neighbor bordering Dow's Lane, Mr. Sheps, had installed some landscaping without prior authorization at Dow's Lane. So the committee recommended a letter be sent to him, and I believe that letter was sent out yesterday asking him, reminding him to follow procedures and protocols.
We've had this issue in the past, if I remember.
We have, we have. And I, you know, he needs another friendly reminder. And that was it.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, thank you. Going on to seven point six. I know that there were certain board members that wanted to discuss, but to give an overview, the board meets for a retreat once or twice a year. This has been for the past few years. We have met twice this year. The purpose of the retreat, I guess, is manifold. The main purpose of which is to teach the board how to be a better board. The public should be aware that the, I call them sunshine laws, since we called them back in Pennsylvania, but the open meeting law of New York applies. So it's not an opportunity for the board to discuss things that should be discussed and are required to be discussed by law in public. But it's really meant to be a workshop for the board to discuss how the board is going to lead and to teach board members to be better board members. I could just tell you from my own experiences that I've found that, you know, coming onto the board, we all have our own views about what it means to be a school board member. And generally, without any of us having any experience of being on a school board prior to being elected. And I found the retreats that we've had, by and large, to be, to be very good, if nothing else, to begin and to foster a working relationship among the board members, you know, on a personal basis. So that's all I have to say about that. I don't know if any other board members want to speak.
I should add one thing to that, which is this past year and some years, we have an outside consultant come in to help facilitate the meetings because we feel that it gets us to a better place and it makes more efficient use of our time. We haven't done that always in the past, but I think the last few years, we've actually had an outside consultant, so.
The consultant can also act as an authority to keep us from violating the open meeting law. If we start discussing something, because, you know, you get into the heat of discussion, the consultant will say, you can't talk about that here. You have to wait for a public board meeting. You know, it's not because we have any ill intent. It's just we're humans. We start talking about something. But that's another good reason to have the consultant there.
And one of the things, not only does it not violate the New York State laws, but in good governance, they teach us that they encourage boards to go on a retreat at least once or twice a year for the purposes of, you know, goal setting and planning and kind of bigger picture, strategy issues.
Well, maybe as the board member, maybe I'm not even sure if I was a board member when I raised this issue. I just hope to be able to clarify where the boundary is when we talk about open meeting law in terms of really goal-setting and planning would be my concern. I would have thought that there might be a concern. I know as a member of the public, I was a little surprised several years ago to find out that the board had gone off and sort of set its plans for the year about what was going to accomplish in a closed retreat. And, you know, I just want to, you know, clarify whether that's, you know, within the realm of what's acceptable under quote-unquote "good governance" or under the law about what boards can do, or whether that would even be desirable for us to do. I mean, it seems like the broader goal-setting, I mean, it's one thing to set goals about how you're going to work as a team, right? As a group. And I think I understand that that is part of what the retreats are designed to do, right? To figure out how to function better as, I wouldn't say a team, but as a group. But to then think about what we want to have as goals for the board and/or the superintendent or the school district to accomplish during the year. It seems to me that generally that would be the sort of thing that we want to be having a public discussion about. And, you know, I think I'm just mindful of making sure we draw, you know, unless I'm incorrect about that, I'd be careful that we draw the line there so that we don't close off from public awareness where we want this district to go and are part in that process.
Yeah, I could just tell you that, you know, in the past, we have made sure that we have not crossed the line and, you know, happy to, you know, bring you up to speed on all of those issues. Not so much that we're the experts on it, but I'm sure our counsel and the consultant that's brought in, Chris, can give you the skinny on what is permitted to be spoken about in the retreat. And that's exactly what I think we would plan to do.
I think, you know, you were talking about the idea of the governance training, the discussions that occur amongst the board. And I have to say that, you know, I'm a part of those conversations as well because it's important for us to build our relationships and establish effective lines of communication. But through that dialogue, there's certain items that naturally come up that may grow into goals down the road. But I think it would be certainly the intent of the board to finalize and discuss any goal formulation for the board, certainly in a public forum.
Yeah, I don't think, that's really just a discussion. There's really nothing to vote on.
No, correct.
I guess seven point seven, moving on to the long-range planning initiative. I forget who was it. John, was that you the one to discuss?
It was at least me.
Okay.
I don't remember if it was only me, but here's, I think that, I think it would be helpful. Dr. Harrison has put forth, has, I believe, solicited several, I don't know if solicit is right. We've gotten several proposals from consulting firms, I believe, three. And I think it, to me, raised the issue of my feeling that we as a board and maybe with Dr. Harrison and the rest of the administration should be having a discussion about what we believe the function of a long-term planning process should be. You know, I became concerned in looking at those proposals that they really had a template that may not be the kind of template we would want to follow, that we were going to get kind of a, an off-the-shelf product that they're going to kind of put a district through like they would put a number of other districts through. And I'm kind of, for various reasons, leery of having a consultant. Maybe it's not appropriate to have a consultant at the early stage. I'm not sure. But it's a topic I'd like to raise. The other part of it is, I think that to some extent, it's longer-term planning should be part of our, should be part of the administration's general functioning, right? It's, I mean, no person in a position of authority, I think, should be running their job just on a year-to-year basis. We need to be, and I presume are developing goals with the members of the administration about where they're going over the longer run. So there's a, it's not clear how much of this process would be just something that we could develop ourselves in working with the administration, who would have it as part of their normal, normal job to help us do this and part of their normal responsibilities, either Raina on the curriculum side or Beverly on the financial side and Chris on all sides. So that's the kind, those are kind of the topics I'd like to raise and how we go about this process.
You know, as you know, we started this process months back as part of, actually, one of our retreats. We're starting to think about going to look into the long-range plan and how we would go about doing that. Obviously, now that you're on the board, I'd like to get your thoughts. I guess a couple of things. Of course, it needs to be a collaborative effort between the board and the administration. And I think that's the only way that it can get done. But in my mind, the, and what we've been told from our consultants and just from the research I've done with, looking at what other boards have done, the board needs the honeness. It's a long-range plan. And it's something that the board needs to lead, something that the, I feel the only way that the community is going to buy into it is if the board leads the process. So really where we are now is trying to figure out how the board wants to do this and put our first step forward in formulating a long-range plan. My personal view is that whereas, of course, we'll take the suggestions of Dr. Harrison, Dr. Core, and Ms. Miller to focus the board, and I'm not wed to any specific, any specific consultant, but I've seen in other roles how, as Phil mentioned before, how having a consultant there who has, unlike the five of us, actually done a strategic plan or a long-range plan for a school district before would be very helpful for us in A, staying on topic, B, making sure that we're thinking about the right things, and C, herding the five of us cats to try to come up with a consensus for moving forward because all of us are going to have our own ideas about what that plan needs to look like. Dr. Harrison could have his ideas, Dr. Core's going to have her ideas. But if we're going to do this, I think we should do it right. And I think we should do it with the idea of actually coming out of it with a long-range plan. And I think that, you know, frankly, the money that it would cost if our goal is to have a bona fide long-range plan is well spent to have a consultant on. Anything else, any thoughts?
Yeah, I can speak to strategic planning with some experience because my title at work is actually Vice President of Digital Strategy. And I lead our, my company's efforts in strategic planning for our digital businesses. And I can say, John, as you probably know, it's extremely difficult to herd the cats because not everybody wants to think strategically. There's actually a big difference between strategy or planning and tactics, meaning what gets done on a day-to-day level. And I'm really suspicious that we cannot do this alone. A, because we don't have any experience doing long-range planning, the five of us, within a district, in a school district, even though you and I may have strategic planning experience in business, and a school district, I think, is different. The other thing is that we don't have a good history in our district of having done this. It's been many, many years since we have done a strategic plan. So the people in our district, such as Bev and Raina and Chris, they're not familiar with doing that in our district. They may very well have experience doing that in other, I'm sorry, Raina.
Raina, pardon.
Yeah, sorry, Raina. Not in your current role, of course. Well played. Yes. There's always an answer. So I think that having an outside consultant would help us in terms of just experience in terms of doing that. The other thing is, you know, contrary to what you said, I'm actually not uncomfortable with the fact that consultants bring a template to follow. Again, when I've done the strategic planning process in my company, I've actually used other other people's templates. I've used Procter &amp; Gamble's templates, even though Procter &amp; Gamble is a totally different business than running websites. Having the templates to follow is actually, I think, a good thing because it tells us where we're going, what are the boxes we're trying to fill in, what are the things we're trying to solve for. Because if it's totally open-ended, what we might end up with is something that's extremely simple, like a mission statement and a vision statement and a few other, you know, statements that sound sort of good in a public theater, but don't actually give any guidance to our administrators. Because ultimately, I believe what we're trying to do in the long-range planning process is come up with a plan that is at a fairly high level that the administrators can then sort of follow and rally around, and particularly around the budgeting process, which I know you care deeply about. That has been our biggest challenge is we haven't really known at the time when we're cutting or adding what exactly is the most important thing to anybody in the district or even to us, except on maybe a personal level, meaning Robin will have the things that she wants to add in and Maria will have the things that she wants to add in. But that's not the board agreeing as a whole, nor is it the district as a whole working with the community to decide what the priorities are. So I feel very strongly that having a structure and having a consultant to help us is valuable and that, given the fact that we have not done this in a very long time, I actually think it's money well spent. If we're going to hire this consultant every year to help us do this, I would say that's not money that's well spent. But I think spending this money once every five or seven years is actually a perfectly reasonable investment.
I don't remember. How much money were you talking about?
Twenty-five thousand.
I don't remember.
Approximately.
So I was on the board when we did the last strategic planning process along with Raina and Tanya. And I think it means different things to different people, frankly. I think it will be driven by the consultant. I think having 2020 vision and looking back at what we went through last time, I can say from the board perspective that we spent an awful lot of time of people's time, staff time, man-hours of staff, teachers, administrators in meetings and meetings and meetings and meetings. And at the end of the day, we have this document that I'm not exactly sure that it was really got us to where we wanted to go. So with that in mind and kind of looking at it different lens, I actually tend to agree with what John is bringing up. I think a consultant is a good idea. I almost am thinking along the lines of, you know, the way Steve Jobs said, think different. I'm not so convinced a school strategic planning consultant is the right person to hire. I'm also thinking perhaps we want to go out and get a bid from a management consultant and see what they would do with it. I just see these school consultants have, and again, I'm coming off the space study. And I look at the space study and I think this was really not what I, what we ended up with from that study was not what I had expected or hoped for, for that $13,000. And I'm concerned that we're going to go down the same path because someone calls themselves a school consultant and does a strategic plan and perhaps it's not going to be getting us where we need to go. And I'm also much more focused that, you know, on outcomes. I think our strategic plan should be focused on action and not necessarily pages and pages of information that's really not going to move us forward. How are we going to move forward? How are we going to end up in a better place? So with all that being said, while I agree in outside consultants, right, I'm not convinced that the typical consultants are the way to go.
Can I just respond to the action thing?
Yeah.
I think we have to be clear in our definition of what action is, right? Because it's not our job as school board members to act, right? It is the administration's job to act, right? That's, our job is to set the policies, the goals and the priorities, right?
Correct.
But just to be clear.
But as an action-oriented plan, I mean, I think it needs to be very clearly defined. Here's where we want to go.
Yeah.
And then it would be up to the administration to figure out how it's going to get there.
Absolutely.
As opposed to, I kind of look at what we ended up with last time, which was pages and pages of question one and version two.
Did you use a consultant last time?
Kathy had a lot of experience with strategic planning for schools.
It didn't show.
But I'm, but again, given what those proposals, and again, you know, I'm concerned that that's a particular training that they had and we might end up going along the same path, which is a concern of mine. So.
No, no, no. Go ahead. Go ahead. No, no.
I don't, you know, I think my concern is not per se one of whether or not we hire somebody to help us with the process. My concern is that there, I think there is, you know, and I'm new to this process, but there's, there's a, an industry out there of people who make their living, sometimes former educators, in helping, helping school districts with things. And they have, you know, in what, in my two or three experiences watching the district go through using people, there is a, there is a way that they do it that kind of, I think, tends to, it is, as Robin said, kind of very process-oriented. I think it involves focus groups and other things that tend to lead you to a middle-of-the-road kind of compromised set of solutions that are not going to get, you know, this is a district, I think, that should be, in terms of the money we spend and the parents who move there with expectations for their kids' education, should be a high-end kind of place with high goals and high attainment of those goals. And I would, I'm not saying that a consultant couldn't get us there, but I don't see in the proposals that we've gotten so far, any evidence of the type of people or the type of thinking that would lead us to where we want to go. I, Robin's suggestion of a management consultant is interesting to talk about. I don't know whether that's something we could possibly afford, but it's an interesting idea. But I am concerned that if you get somebody who's done 50 other districts, we're going to end up being like 50 other districts. They're going to go out to the focus groups and hear those little things that they want to hear in order to get their little, their report in. It's going to kind of get us to the nice, kind of fairly generic, soft goals that are not really where we want to, or at least I personally want to go and frankly, not where I talked about going in my campaign.
Well, it depends whether you're going to let the focus groups lead the district in terms of the long-term, the priority setting, or whether the board is going to actually be leading that process and playing things back to the district. That is how I envisioned it. I don't think you can use focus groups to drive, to drive important decisions of the like that you're describing. I think if you use a focus group, you are going to end up with a fairly bland median.
Especially when those, you know, the focus groups are mediated through a consultant facilitator who's trying to pull themes out of it. Obviously, the board, I think, has to lead the process and that's what, you know, what we're elected to do. And this is, I think, an important function of what we should be doing.
But any different, the better or the brighter, I hesitate to use that word, but the better the consultants, then I think the better the empower. And ones who kind of have the ability to inspire and to think out of the box and to really take us to the level of a district we want to be, I think, are the consultants we want to use. And I kind of agree with John that there was nothing in there that, other than it was yet another consultant for yet another thing we're doing, I'm just really concerned we're going to end up with yet another report that's going to go on the shelf.
Well, then you, I mean, you did propose an alternative, which is using a management consultant. I was, think it's going to be very hard to find someone as a management consultant that is going to do it for $25,000 a year. It's possible, I suppose.
A year, you said?
For the project, yeah. It's a project year, it doesn't.
I mean, I could, I mean, I know some people who worked in the department.
Okay.
I mean, it could. I mean, again, this is just a question to see where we're going to head. It's not a question to see, it might not be possible, but is it, is it something that the board we want to explore or is it not?
Clarify what, I mean, I'm hearing two different things that a consultant might do, right? Rob and Phil, I think you're really saying, a consultant is somebody who knows how to do this. We don't know how to do this, right?
They've got the structure, the framework, so that we are, know what we're aiming for when we're trying to create the documents that our administration can follow. This is ultimately a product that is both for the administration and for the community. The community doesn't have to necessarily act on anything. The community needs to know what's in there, so the community needs to know what we think is important and there is a reasonable agreement about what our priorities are. Ultimately, though, the administration needs this document as much as anyone in order to follow something to, in order to know where we're headed and what we're planning for. And so my fear is that without any structure at all, that we will not actually be producing the right kind of documents that they need to actually get their job.
And you, and you don't have the confidence, I don't know whether or not it's justified, that we can mend that structure on our, at least on our own or?
Do you have that confidence, John? Because we're talking, I mean, and I don't mean to.
I don't know.
Well, I.
I have a question, really.
Well, but I think, I think we have to stop talking theoretical and start talking practical about doing a long-range plan. We could, we could sit here and talk about what could happen all night. At least in my mind, being led down the road by a consultant like you're suggesting, who's going, and we're going to have a pre-prepared vision for Irvington that we're going to pay $25,000 for, I don't think that any of us ever contemplated that. I'll tell you that I didn't. My, my goal is to have the board lead this process and to use the consultant to make sure that we're doing it the right way. So I don't believe that the five of us have either the know-how or the experience, with the exception of Mr. Whitten, who does this for a living, albeit not in the school district, to put together a bona fide strategic plan. Now, if we're going to talk about whether we do, hopefully it's a pretty short discussion because I want to be, I want to be realistic about what we're doing.
I think, just want to think, just timing, and just to remember, is of the essence because in order to, to be successful with our long-term planning process, we really should be done with it or nearly done with it in December, January, it could slide into January. But we all know that once we get into the budget process, into the heat of the budget process, as we do get into in January, it will be very hard to do both things simultaneously. I think, is it, it would be impossible to say that we couldn't do both things? No. I mean, we, maybe we could, but I think our goal should be to get the thing done by December. And that's a lot of things that have to happen in September, October and November for it to be completed in December. I think we, that's what I really am concerned about. If we said we had two years to get this done, or a year and a half, I'd say, all right, maybe the five of us could actually do that, except for the fact that there are going to be elections in the middle of all that. We just have a very narrow window of getting this work done. And I know what happened to us last year because we did start off with good intentions of trying to get some of the work done and things happened in the fall that made it difficult to do that and.
I disagree with that. I think it just.
We had good intentions.
Of course we did. We always do.
Right, but the five of us have good intentions now.
Look, people who leave the district have to leave the district and, you know, we have to make it happen. We want to make it happen, we have to make it happen. And I think every year, things come up and right now, but I'm saying, right now, I think we are, we're all agreeing that we have to make it happen now.
Of course.
I think we could have made it happen last year, but we didn't. So let's focus on moving forward and let's make it happen this year. It just, things happen all the time.
I think if we have a consultant that is helping us do it.
I agree.
We have a much better chance of getting.
No, that's one of the reasons I agree, that I think we need an outside person to make sure it happens.
Right.
I think, you know, and that's my thinking, who is the best person? Could I suggest something? Because I don't know where we are. I mean, perhaps if we meet some of them and talk to them, we might feel differently or better or worse, I don't know. But maybe that's an option.
Can I ask where you found the consultants?
I didn't necessarily find them. There's groups that are known for producing high-quality work. One is Cambridge, which is known nationally for their work in education. The other is the EQUA Group, which is now taking on Hazard, Young and Tia, which has been working with the board and knows the community. EQUA has an extensive experience with working with school districts on this front. And the other is School Leadership, which is a more local organization that's based out of the New York, Connecticut area. So, you know, certainly I reached out to colleagues in the area and sought folks that they recommended. I think there's, there's a couple of things to look at here that didn't get mentioned. We're talking about shortcomings and we're talking about consultants and their proposals. But if there are in particular asks or wants that the board has, state what they are. And let's see, we, you know, these proposals, these processes do not have to be something that's taken out of the box. They have, these companies have given proposals that reflect probably what my ask was. And if you have a different vision for that, tell me what that vision is. I shared these with you a couple of weeks ago and have asked for feedback. And so now I think it's time for, for us to have some.
I, I just, in response to that, I, this is exactly what I was waiting for. I thought we were going to talk about it publicly. I felt like it was too complicated to get in this, you know, email, 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 email. I felt like at least if we're sitting together, we can have a discussion and maybe come up with some next steps.
Yeah, and I think, and I think here we are. And I think that, I think there's opportunity for, I think, some individually for us to identify what the shortcomings or the concerns you may have with individual proposals. And it's possible that some of these consultants or all of them may not be able to accommodate what that want is for the board members. So then we'd have to look at potentially pursuing things in a different direction. But I think it's important for us to identify what's there and where the shortcomings are. I think we also have to be considerate that there is value in someone that has experience working with schools, that there is analysis of achievement data on a national level, on a local level. They look into your curriculum and give you recommendations and thoughts about those things. So there's an analysis that that takes place with this as well, that I don't know if we would be well-prepared to handle our own independently. I'm open to the conversation of how we want to move forward. I, I would say that, and as I was going to say in our discussion regarding the space study later on, that I think that there's value in us having that conversation, but for us to think that, that we can't go from board meeting to board meeting. I think there needs to be work that clearly needs to be done in between and has been identified. This is the work of the board and a part of the leadership of the board. And I would be completely open to both of these initiatives, and it was going to be my ask later on, that maybe there is, the board identifies a point person on each of the projects that I can work with and we can sit and ask these questions and whether it's a conference call or an interview. One outfit is local, another one comes from Illinois and the other, I think, is based out of Texas. So the individual personal interview might be a challenge, but it's not to say that we couldn't do initial phone conversations or a Skype or something along those lines to ask the questions and facilitate that dialogue and try to do so in an aggressive, timely manner.
Maybe we need to just, as a board or individually, try to, you know, articulate what we think that this process should accomplish. So maybe that might help you, guide you in working with these consultants.
That would be helpful.
I mean, to me, though, identifying shortcomings is, again, to me, it all comes down to the people who are doing the study. And it's not a question of shortcomings or things I want. It's a question of, I want to feel comfortable with the consultants we hire to make sure that we're putting our money to good use. And so I don't know how to give you a list of shortcomings because I don't think that would address my questions.
Well, I think the idea, though, of getting these folks on the phone and really going through each, that seems like a perfectly, because it is our process, so we should be doing that anyway.
I didn't understand the issue. What do you, what do you mean by shortcomings?
Well, I was saying, I think that we are identifying that maybe there were some items that maybe weren't being included in referencing, maybe there was not enough focus on things from a business or facility lens or whatever the case may be, if that there were certain aspects of what you saw in a long-range plan that were not included in the proposals, that we could have that conversation and say, hey, this is an area that we're interested in looking at, or this was an angle that we thought that wasn't reflected in your plan or your proposal. How would you see including that as, you know, our consultant, as our facilitator?
So the, I think the main question is, do we, do we need to do these interviews with these consultants in a public meeting on July 2nd? Or do we, or do we do these offline? It seems to me it's much more efficient to do it offline.
I would think so. I think that if there was a board member or two, so we certainly didn't have, you know, obviously couldn't have a quorum of the board doing it offline, that I think what we could do is a first step. Any questions that come up from respective plans, I could schedule conference calls, and we could identify the time that we could connect with those individuals to have the interviewer dialogue that we feel is necessary to take the next step.
So I guess where we are, that we agreed that we are going to go down the road if you're a consultant, that if anybody has specific issues, I know, John, you mentioned, looking at the three plans, you had concerns. Robert, you mentioned that you might, if anybody has specific issues with their proposals, then get those to Chris ASAP, so that he can relay back to the three people, so that they can redo their plans to the extent that they can accommodate the concerns. And then we'll schedule amongst us who is available to meet with, or those two of us for each one, to meet with the consultants and give feedback to the rest of us.
What about trying to find an alternative consultant?
I mean, if you want to, and that's fine. I mean, it sort of reminds me, honestly, and I'm not, I mean, it's a fine idea. It sort of reminds...
I don't know if it's possible.
Well, no, I understand too. So I just want to be as practical about this as possible. I'm not too sure, knowing what I know about this stuff. And I like to get Phil's thoughts, but, you know, just like the people that came in here saying we were looking for a superintendent, that we should hire somebody that's never been a superintendent in any school district before, because we should think outside the box. Sounds great, but I don't want Irvington to be a, you know, a test case for somebody doing their first strategic plan for a school district. So if, well, you may feel differently, I think...
It's a lot lower cost than having somebody be there.
I don't think it's...
A superintendent of a district where they've never been...
Well, but here's my point. Here's my point. My point is, is that if you think there's somebody out there, it's one thing to say, we should look at it. If you think there's somebody out there, identify, and let's consider it. But to say that there might be somebody out there...
Well, it's going to take research.
I think that's right. I think that's right.
Not like I'm going to pick up the money.
Look, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to investigate to some extent. I really think that, I wouldn't say it's outside the box. It's kind of, we're looking for something above the norm. District that exceeds the sort of, kind of...
Cookie cutter.
The cookie cutter, yeah, exactly.
Well, no, no, I understand. But let me look again. That's...
That's what the public expects, and that's, and it may be that, it may be that the existing firms are capable of getting their mind around delivering that. Fine, I haven't opened my mind about that.
If we've worked with a consultant that has already worked with high-performing districts, isn't that...
Well, yeah, let me just add, it would be great if we could get...
That would be part of the interview process.
Great if we can get some sort of work samples of, in that, of those kind of, that kind of work, with high-performance, high-expectation, highly-funded districts, so we can understand that they get that sort of thing.
And I think at least Hazard Young and Atia had given us those in the summertime, but then we received scars, nails, and others. I mean, nobody's suggesting using somebody who's just doing podunk schools and, you know. I guess, all I'm suggesting is, is that it's nice to have an idea that there may be another consultant out there. I don't think it's the best use of the administration's time trying to find a needle in the haystack, honestly. So if any board member wants to look into it, I think it's great, but I, you know...
I know people at Bain because of their work at Time Inc. I can talk to somebody at Bain.
Yeah, I would, it's talk to them. I have a connection, it's at the Department of Education. I can talk to them and see if they have...
It's going to be about money is the problem, I think.
Right.
I mean, they charge?
You know, but speaking of money... But speaking of money, you know, I've got to say, we're really getting up there in terms of the cost of a consultant. I mean, if you add this to, I'm sorry, you can make a face at me, but I think that we need to be very careful about bringing on consultants to make sure that we do our homework before we hire them, and that we're pretty comfortable that the outcome we're going to get from them is worth the dollars that we spend. Because we don't have that money.
Honestly, I think that goes without saying, and I think that's what we're doing here, so...
But I think we're also coming off of something where I think maybe we learned a little bit of, you know, where we need to start off this time stronger.
I think, I think the two are apples and oranges.
I do too.
If you're referring to the space study, I think it's apples and oranges to tie those two together. Because if that's, if that's going to, I guess, inform your views on, it really is two separate things.
I see a lot of parallels. I do. I mean, I just, I see that we brought on someone, we talked to companies that had a lot of experience doing X, and we asked them to do what they always did. And maybe they didn't factor in kind of Irvington as much, maybe because they were so used to doing the same thing for every other district. I just, I just, I've learned from that experience, and I don't want to make the same mistakes twice.
Yeah, and I guess we'll get to the space study conversation. I wasn't here last week, and I do have some thoughts about that. I don't think that, it's nearly as bad as people would think, considering why we...
But let's stay in point here.
Well, let's, I don't think we need to talk about that here. So do you have the direction, do you need Chris on this one?
I think they do. I'll send out a clarifying message to the board and make sure we have everything on point. And then we'll start the conversation. And then once we've collated the questions, I'll ask that the board identify. Mr. Graves, if you want to organize that, a person or two that would be available, and maybe that, maybe dependent on schedules, when we can schedule the interviews. But we will absolutely get the ball rolling tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
No problem.
I guess now moving on to 9.9 through 9.13. These are all items relating to the board approving, as we do every year, summer stipend payments for curriculum work to be done during the summer. And I think there was questions, I forget who wanted to discuss or have the administration speak to what this was all about, the board.
Robert?
I'm sorry.
I think you had questions about 9.9?
Yeah, sorry.
I also, but John?
9.9, I don't know if that was actually a question item, now that I look at it. Is that, because that's summer maintenance help?
It's all summer. Wait, the, is the...
9.9 is the payment for summer curriculum work, and it appears that it's almost all the...
No, it somehow, that changed from this.
This has been renumbered.
It's been renumbered. 9.9 is custodial.
Oh, I have a...
I thought, I didn't really talking about...
I'm sorry.
9.9, 9.10.
We'll have to vote for 9.9. It's really 9...
I'm sorry, I'm, I have no comment.
9, 10 to 9.13. 9, 10 to 9.13.
Okay, okay, so 9, 9, um...
That's 9.10 then.
That's 9.10, yeah, okay.
So I don't, I would ask that Dr. Core, if you could be so kind to speak to each of these resolutions, whether there's a question?
Sure. I don't know, is it, would it be helpful if you had, if you asked a specific question? Just so then to focus my answer?
On 9.9, I have a specific...
9.10.
Oh, 9.10, sorry. Sorry, you're making it really hard for people.
And I have, I have, I have some questions on this too. Go ahead.
Do you want to go?
No, you can go.
Okay, so I have two specific questions, which is, is this, it appears to be almost every teacher. Is it almost every teacher on 9.10?
It's any teacher who was, who was interested in working in the summer.
Okay, so it's not a requirement, but if they, whoever wants to do it. Okay, I guess my question, my other specific question is, I see that Gwen Carney is on there for grade five, and I also see that later on, she's on there for a technology coordinator. So my question is, given that she's now taking on a different role in the district, is it really appropriate for her to be part of math curriculum, summer work, as a fifth-grade teacher, when in reality, she's going to be a technology coordinator, and she's already doing some of her work for that?
Probably not. So if we think back to, are we, two weeks ago, where there was some post-payment? We had some work that had been done, and we had not had it pre-approved by the board. So I think there, there's a couple of different pieces, so let me just speak to that. When the summer work gets scheduled, we need to make sure that anybody who we think we are going to be paying for summer work needs to be approved on the board agenda. So remember, two weeks ago, we actually ended up paying people post completing the work. Just because they're put on the agenda does not necessarily mean that they will ultimately perform the work. It happens all the time. Somebody suggested, or will say their intent is to do the work, but then the summer comes, and something happens, and they, and they'll say, sorry, I can't do it. So summer is tricky for us, because as an institution, we're required to, board appoint, we're requesting a resolution to pay these people, but we're not necessarily... So Gwen will come off from the fifth-grade work, because she wouldn't be doing that. She will be doing the technology work instead. So in this case, it is a place, it's a placeholder, in the sense that we need to make sure that we're giving, that you're granting permission for these people to do the work. But who exactly will do the work, and how many days could vary? One person here might do one day of work, and another person might do three days of work.
Well, I guess I feel uncomfortable voting to pay her if you're saying she's going to come off. I mean, I'm fine, you know, putting in, you know, a miscellaneous or some placeholder, but I feel that it, it just feels wrong to me, so that's my...
Can I ask, is the rule that you have to approve names or just X amount of people? How does this work? People, the actual people, because what will happen is, when they put in for payment, in order for us to pay them the additional, you know, they get paid the curriculum rate, in order for us to pay them, you have to approve. So two weeks ago, when we had the names of the teachers on there who had done some of the math assessment development for the local APR, they had done the work prior, and it was an issue. So we need to have their names on there in order for us to, to really follow the way that it should be done.
Okay, so in other words, having Gwen's, using her as an example, having her here, she can't be a placeholder for somebody else. So another teacher in fifth grade, Michelle Sensi, she's not on here, oh, she is.
Isn't the way to deal with this, because I think, I think the concern comes from the wording. Because it says that, and maybe this is required by law, but let me just throw it out there. It says the Board of Education hereby approves payment for the following staff members. If we're just approving the names, and we're obviously, we're not going to, the district's not going to pay anybody unless they do the work, can't we just say that the board hereby, hereby approves the following staff members to be eligible to perform summer curriculum work, et cetera, and not talk about the payment? And then, of course, they're not going to get paid unless they do the work.
But if she's not going to do math curriculum work, why are we approving her?
I think we can remove her.
It's one name. I think it doesn't, it doesn't really matter, right? It doesn't really matter. If she's not going to do the work, she's not going to get paid.
But we don't know that.
Then I have that as board members, because the name was there.
Well, but it doesn't...
It's an ask. It's a question. It's a good question to ask.
It's a good question, but ultimately, it doesn't matter if she doesn't do the work, is my point.
But should she be doing the work? If she's a technology person, why would I want to pay to just, why would it just...
I think Raina just said it was a mistake.
Not doing the work.
Right.
Right, so then why can't we just take her name off?
So let me just clarify, so here's what happens, the...
You want to just take her name off?
We could just remove her name. We could remove her name. You know, there are many, many things happening simultaneously. So we're waiting for the board for the budget and the budget vote. But we don't wait for the budget vote to start the process of finding out. Hopefully, if our budget passes, we need to be ready with who's going to do the work. So I'm guessing what happened was, we put it out, and we're not sure at that point. We needed to make sure that should she continue to be a fifth-grade teacher and want to participate, it would be good for her to participate. So I think her name just was there. And again, she wouldn't do the work, and she wouldn't be paid for the work, but...
Okay, so can we then remove her name from the list? Can we also change the lead-in of 9.10, 9.11, 9.12, and 9.13 to state what I said previously, which is that the Board of Education hereby approves the strike payment for, and then said, the following staff members to insert be eligible to perform. And I think that would take care of the concerns.
He must be a lawyer.
Well, you have to have the word payment.
Yeah, I would think at some point...
Ultimately, the board has to approve the payment.
Payment, right.
It says at the curriculum rate.
It says at the curriculum rate. We're just not approving the...
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's included.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't read the rest of the lines.
But that kind of gives, yeah, that we're not paying, we're definitely cutting a check today.
Exactly right. It says that we're approving them to be eligible for payment at the curriculum rate.
But can I just clarify?
Yes.
So would this then go on the next agenda?
No, we're going to do it again.
Well, some of the work is being done before that next meeting, so I just...
No, 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 no. That's why I was, I was doing it for Elaine's benefit, because when I ask for a motion, I'll say, motion is amended.
But I have, I have different, can I just have other questions if I may?
Oh, no, of course. No, I was just trying to deal with that one issue, and then this weekend.
Well, go ahead, if you want.
No, I think we're done, so whatever.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I want to, is this, this seems like a big summer program. And I want to understand, not having any understanding of the context or the history of it, I want to understand, is this a bigger summer program than we've had before? And what's going on with that kind of...
Sure. I would say some years more, and some years less. Clearly, the Common Core, the need for the revision of the Common Core is driving a lot of this work. We, several years ago, appointed several at this point, we had developed a curriculum review cycle. And the curriculum review cycle was designed to, in some ways, manage some of these pieces. So for instance, over the course of a year, we would determine which curriculum areas we need examined. And that's who we would target for money. So we said, we're going to be looking at our curriculum for page twelve, science. We would look at that, and we would define what work needed to be done for revision of the curriculum. Or we'd say, well, this is where we're going to spend the dollars, because this is where we're working right now. And we would have some other side projects. You never know, a teacher changes grades. There's always a little bit of something, but it was, it was more targeted. What's happened is, the Common Core has put a little bit of a, I should say, I would say several years of not having someone consistent in this seat, has, we've lost our curriculum review cycle. And we have a lot of curriculum work that needs to be done. So I think what we're seeing is it's twofold. Part of it is, we need to now get back and develop a system for how we're going to be looking at our curriculum and revising our curriculum. But the second part is the revision to the Common Core. And sometimes what will happen is we'll see a change of one grade level. Well, if you see a change of one grade level, like in the middle school and in social studies, well, then you might need some revision just of a certain grade or two grades. But the Common Core has hit us on so many levels that we really need revision across the board.
And just the, I mean, this raises sort of a bigger question in my mind than this, than would be appropriate here, but, you know, questions like, is the Common Core sort of what is generally driving our curriculum decisions at this point? Or is this just simply a, is it a compliance thing? Or is it a, the state tests are written according to the Common Core, so we've got to make sure that we get those threes and fours on the state test? But is there more? And those are bigger issues than summer helps. I just want to hope that we have a chance to discuss those before long.
And I think that was, that was part of your curriculum presentation.
Right.
Was about two months ago. Can we get John, can we get John a copy of that?
I probably have seen it, but maybe from it, get the kind of, might need to have follow-up conversation.
Okay.
Because I think there are, you know, issues, there are substantial issues.
But I, I mean, I actually think it's worth also maybe going through the presentation and then perhaps putting another one on the agenda in the beginning of the year and talk about it for the coming year as well.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, no, I think we do, I think we have done this year, absolutely.
As, as connected with our long-term planning, because it is a question of where do we want to...
Well, let's get started on the plan and...
You know, if we send a presentation to John, I'm just suggesting maybe to see the whole board, so that if any of us want to take another look at it, because it's been a while. And the other, the other thing is, for example, the technology piece, clearly, we're recreating that position, so they're creating a new curriculum. So in that case, there's a cost for something, because we didn't have a really workable curriculum.
My, my, yeah, my impression from knowing, you know, young children who went through that previous curriculum is that it wasn't, wasn't much curriculum there. If you already knew how to use a mouse and home.
Right, we talked about that in the budget process, so...
I have a more detailed question, then. Then I'll shut up about this. But did I hear you say that this is sort of optional? That basically the faculty members have the option of basically deciding whether they want to do this work? And that leaves me, I'm really not understanding what the goal of the process is. If the goal of the process is, we've really gotta get people to do, you know, change whatever they're doing with this money, changing the nature of the curriculum, their teaching, the content of their teaching, I guess, in the different areas. How can that be optional for people? I mean, don't we want every teacher to do this in the summer? And I don't understand the optionality of it.
Well, it is optional, because practically, teachers do not have to work in the summer. So, you can't require or mandate a teacher to come during the summer months and to do work. As you can see from the numbers of teachers, we have a very large number of teachers who are interested in doing it. The way that it works is a group of teachers or two teachers will work on the development of a unit, and then when the teachers come back to the end of August, we'll spend time talking about that unit and everybody will implement that work. So, we don't really need everybody to do it, but it is to their benefit. And so, I think your gut is right on that, that yes, it's definitely better.
So, and then there's a way to, you know, and obviously, it's your concern to make sure that the required work gets done at each of the grade levels and each of the subjects. Okay, great, thank you.
So, are we good moving forward, everybody good? So, can I get a motion to approve nine-point-nine, which we pulled out mistakenly as-is, but then to approve nine-ten through nine-thirteen inclusive with the changes to the resolution, to each resolution as I had suggested to Ms. Cardia to incorporate, to remove the language and add the additional language as a forceps?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-zero, thank you. That completes our business agenda this, tonight, and I'd like to turn it over now to Dr. Harrison for the presentations and discussion section under Article eleven.
Okay.
Oh, and I'm sorry. It's done. We had voted for the consent agenda before we, when we pulled out the, it was unanimous.
Yeah, I missed that too.
We, when we had, when we had pulled-
Did we vote to approve the consent agenda?
We voted to approve the consent agenda without the items that we pulled out. And then we dealt with-
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Yeah, I was afraid.
Yeah, and then-
You said you wanted to talk about some of that. Right, I had just, there was, well, it doesn't, there were several things in that agenda that were items that really, I think, had involved the board before I arrived on the board and I didn't have proper information on. It's not an important issue, because I would just abstain in these things, I would still have passed four-zero, so.
If you wanna go back, we-
No, I think it's supposed to be-
Okay, okay. Okay, and just before, and Phil's right, maybe I am a little bit rusty, I failed to, before the adoption of the consent agenda, thank the PTSA, Mosaic tile, the Auto Awards trustees, and a host of donors who provided funds for the David Scott Altman Scholarship Fund, about thirty-five individuals who will be receiving thank you notes from the board. But thank you all for your donations to the district, and please keep them coming. It's all yours, Dr. Harrison.
Great, very good. So, we have two other presentations and discussions this evening. The first, I'm gonna ask Ms. Miller to provide a summary of our school facility report cards that are a requirement with SED. So, with that said, Ms. Miller?
Okay, thank you. It's a requirement of the State Education Department to present these to the board on a yearly basis, and each report card has to specify a specific building as outlined by SED. So, basically, they're all the same, and I just give you one as a sample on the screen. It gives you a lot of information to ensure that the district is maintaining its buildings and is aware of all of the critical areas. So, we start out, and it gives the general information about this specific building. This one here is for the middle school, the CMS building. It shows that we have a certificate of occupancy that is active, it doesn't expire until December two thousand thirteen. It shows where it's posted. It shows that I'm the one that completed this report. It shows the right-to-know designee is Gary Knowles for the district, and right-to-know is for hazardous materials that he would have to notify the general public, pesticides, et cetera. It gives the general information on the building, such as the construction date, the size of the building. Excuse me.
Yeah.
That's not, the button on the side.
Let me move the thing where you- Okay, okay, thank you, technical difficulties. And then the next page, it shows the last date of the five-year building condition, thank you, survey, which is done every five years, the last time it's done in Irvington was two thousand ten, so we're not due to have it done again until two thousand fifteen. This building, as are all our buildings, are in satisfactory condition. We're mandated to do annual visual inspections, and ours were all done in-house, November of two thousand twelve this year. The facility report card also would show any unsatisfactory building systems that we had not corrected from previous annual reports or from the previous building condition survey. This building has none. It also shows that where you could find certain information, such as remaining useful license for the building and the need for routine maintenance and repairs, and that would be found on the capital facility plan. In this district, the capital facilities plan has been presented to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and we reviewed that five-year plan that was updated. So, in this building here, there's a few health and safety improvements that are indicated in that five-year plan that we need to address, and they're prioritized, such as upgrading the PA system, and we'll be doing a review of that, as well as the asphalt walkways between the buildings and exterior door hardware. None are critical for this district. Usually there, you will find health and safety improvements, such as ADA compliance. Usually, almost all districts need to bring their bathrooms up to ADA compliance.
For the, just a general question while we're clicking through. I guess two things, that, because I know it's a forty-eight-page document of all that. Did any of our buildings receive unsatisfactory?
No.
And good.
No.
Secondly, the shortlist for each building of required repairs as part of the five-year plan?
Yes.
Have we properly funded in the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget, the work that was contemplated to be done next year?
No, not everything. One of the major aspects, and you will see from this page here, the first column is the estimated cost to restore the school building to good repair. That is the dollar figure that is outlined on the five-year plan. The second column is the estimated cost to keep it in good repair, and that is basically an estimated two to four percent of the building replacement cost. The projected annual maintenance spending is apportioned by building, and that's based on our budget. We'll go back to the first column, column nine. Everything that the school district anticipates, putting before the voters for a capital project, if the voters approve it, SED will not approve it for funding if it's not in the five-year plan. So, for example, under the high school plan, we have approximately, just a ballpark figure, an estimate of one million dollars to repair our fields, our athletic fields. That figure will show up in estimated costs to restore. Is that one million dollars budgeted this year? No. So, that's where you see those discrepancies, okay? But it gives you a good overview of the work that does need to be done in each one of the buildings.
So, did you, do I hear you say that the discrepancy between budgeted amounts and the five-year plan amounts is stuff that you would at least potentially envision going into a capital spending plan?
Right, many of the items would. In the five-year facility plan, you have to denote whether it's a general fund project or a capital project or debt service.
Or some of them are just such a large expenditure that we could never do it out of our budget, that it's a, basically, we would only be able to accomplish if we-
Right, right, it would have to be a capital project.
Right.
Did this report contemplate some of the issues that people have brought up with the Main Street School? That Main Street School is gonna require significant funding to remain operational in the future?
Yes, it does address that. The Main Street one facility report card does show that. The energy costs are all apportioned by building. And again, this is just to ensure that the board and the district is conscious of the buildings and making sure that they are in good repair. It's also to ensure that we have a health and safety committee, and that it's active, and that we meet on an annual basis, or at least, in this district, we meet like two or three times a year.
Is that the safety committee?
Pardon?
Is that the safety committee?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe we met four times this year, right?
Okay, here, you'll see I have checked that we meet three to five times a year. You're mandated to meet at least once a year. Also, too, is, this report is verification that we have addressed and looked into lead testing, to asbestos, to radon testing, that we have an integrated pest management program, that we monitor indoor air quality, and that we provide maintenance to our boilers and utilities. It also asks us to see if all of our products are reviewed for hazardous chemicals, and that we are inspecting our roofs and for rodents and growth of mold. So, it's basically an overview of the building conditions, and I have to report to the board every year. It doesn't have to be voted on, but again, if the school district goes out for the vote and it is approved, part of the information and documentation that I have to send to the state would be that five-year facility plan, which includes all of this information.
Again, just on that, I don't know if there's any questions, but I would ask that, while everyone's thinking about the reorg meeting in next year, and to John's point about having this stuff mesh with the long-term plan, these facilities costs and what we're facing in the next five years is gonna be a big portion of that, so I would hope that people would volunteer for the safety committee in Buildings and Grounds, which are gonna vet most of this, you know, with that at the initial level. So, if you could think about volunteering on there, Mrs. Cashin, I'm sure you are.
I wanna stay in all my committees, so stay now.
Is there any questions on this before we go on? Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, moving on, I understand it was a very spirited meeting last week regarding the space utilization study.
That's being traded back.
I still haven't reviewed the, I haven't reviewed the video, but I know that Dr. Harrison wanted to take what we've heard and saw and learned from that meeting and try to give us a framework for moving forward based upon that report.
Sure, certainly, the last meeting progressed in a way that I think no one had anticipated, and as we said, when we headed into this, we had a question that we were looking to answer, and think about how we could possibly utilize our space differently, look for the efficiencies that exist, and see what those possibilities would be for us. Last week, or two weeks back, when we had the presentation, certainly, there was a disconnect with the presenter and the board and audience, but I think there's a piece to it that there's question here. There's things that we have to look at, things that we have to think about a little differently. But I think there's also some decent work here and conversation that can be introduced that we should consider. So, when we think about the experience that we had, and we think about what we did learn, pretty clear that we learned that, you know, when we look at enrollment projections, that there's definitely uncertainty there. You know, we can look at our enrollment from year to year, and we can see bubbles, we can see declines, just following our own trends. And then when we step back and we look at what, you know, the ranges are that were presented by Dr. Saversky, it still provides us a lot of question marks. So, you know, I thought what I'd do is simply highlight and kinda look at where we are in an overview, a little snapshot of what those projections look like. And, you know, certainly, if we look across the top, and you can see, I did a selection of four different years over the span of the ten years that Dr. Saversky forecast, and take a look at where we are in the difference. And certainly, if we were to follow the low range of the projections, you could see that there'd be a dramatic impact, five hundred students. But if we follow the high range, left to right, from two thousand thirteen, fourteen out to ten years down the road, to see only a difference of seventy-eight students, we gotta stop and ask ourselves, well, what does this story mean? Did we look down the middle? We look down the middle, it's two hundred and seventy students. Coincidentally enough, two hundred and seventy students about amounts towards our Main Street School enrollment. So, if that was something that was to be a reality for us, if we were to start to see that type of decline, I think we would have some pretty hard evidence before us about thinking about steps we'd have to take, considerations that we would have to make with respect to how we arrange our schools. However, if we were to look in, and let's say, the high range materializes, and we're in a position with only a decline of seventy-eight students over a ten-year period, it's hardly measurable when we look year to year. You think that we look at how our programs are run and operated now, you could see that viability still being there, and certainly, may not be a need for a shift. But then if we begin to look at our numbers in a little bit of a different way, and we start to think about what that anomaly is, and we know that, you know, kindergarten plays a huge factor here, but if we just look at our enrollment this year, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we have a hundred and forty-four students currently enrolled in kindergarten. We have a twelfth-grade class, a graduating class, of a hundred and fifty-four Irvington students. So, we're looking at a current enrollment of eighteen oh one. But if we were to go, and this is just an assumption, this is Chris Harrison, this isn't Paul Saversky, this isn't any other demographer, but we currently have a hundred and thirteen students enrolled in our kindergarten. Are the odds before us that we're going to have a few more students join us? Of course. Are we gonna have a number that's gonna be comparable to one forty-four? I would presume we won't be there. If we look at our twelfth-grade class, I'm looking at a figure of the students that are currently in our eleventh grade role. So, we're just looking at the kids that are here today, and if we were just to roll that forward and not to think that we're gonna receive any new students, we're not gonna have any children move out of the district, we're looking at a drop of looking at about thirty-seven students. But now, if we were to take a look at maybe where the projection information is, and if we were to look at where we'd estimate, and then again, this is referring to the study projections, eighty-six students is what they would project, and all of a sudden, you start to look, oh, my goodness, look at the difference, eighty-six to one thirteen, and we're not even done with our enrollment yet. The one fifty-one remains the same, and we're seeing a difference now of sixty-one students over where we are today. And I'm looking at what are, the assumption that I'm making, certainly not a mathematician, versus what the study projects, we're looking at a difference of twenty-four students. I think herein lies some of the confusion that we were experiencing last week, and I tried to oversimplify it. Our real numbers this year, looking at some assumed math, and where some of the projections lie, and just trying to identify, well, where's this disconnect? We're seeing the studies maybe projecting eighty-six students versus the hundred and thirteen, we already know that are coming to us. There's a letter on my desk of a family that's requesting their child be admitted to the district on a tuition basis that came in today. So, there's gonna be new folks that move into the community, there's gonna be folks that want their children to enroll on a tuition basis, these numbers are gonna shift. So, with that said, we have to recognize- So with that said, we have to recognize that kindergarten is the driver of enrollment here. We're looking at families that are moving in to the community at different grade levels. We're also looking at students that are returning from private schools in some cases. But interestingly enough, as I've been reaching out to some folks over the past two weeks and having conversations about this data, how should we be interpreting it, what should it mean to us? The one thing that's come up that's been pretty clear is when we look at the vast majority of the school districts in our region, so when I say our region, we can look at the western part of the island, we can look at Westchester, some of Rockland and Putnam. When we look at districts that have similar demographics as ours, when we look at upper-middle-class communities, they're seeing dramatic declines in kindergarten enrollment. And we're looking at two years that are, we're looking at higher than projections. There's something that's interesting here, and something that's atypical to the trend that is present. Some folks certainly want to, you know, speak to the special nature of Irvington, some people want to talk about the housing market impacting it, others may want to point towards the growing trend of folks from the city, Brooklyn in particular, starting to show more and more interest in Irvington, and maybe that's where our shift is coming from. But I'm not in a spot to be able to answer that. And I think for us to be able to go, to move forward, we have to have some reliable data. I don't think that we, that the conversation that we need to start having needs to solely rest with the data, but I think the data begins, has to inform some of our thinking here. We have to think, to get to this point, we have to look at how are we going to normalize this information? We have to think about what value we want to put on the data. So my mind, I look at a couple of different options here, and some, certainly, we could try to work with the existing data that's before us, and we can agree that we're going to use the high-line projection, we can use the middle projection. We can look at, to perform another study or a different analysis utilizing our local expertise. Mr. Montgomery has experience and expertise in this area, and we've already provided him with some data sets associated with our historical enrollment to begin thinking about what some possibilities could be. I know that there isn't a big excitement around looking at a secondary study, but looking at someone that could evaluate where we are from just simply looking at the enrollment component of it, not looking at everything else that's been done, not talking about facility use and reallocating classes or programs from building to building, but to go through and do an evaluation of our data. The $30,000 figure actually comes from a BOSI's planning department that has reviewed our study. I called and spoke with them, explained what our concerns were, explained our experiences going back two weeks ago. They took the time and they went through, reviewed our study, and believe that they can come back and give us some pointed forecasts that would be reliable and could inform this process. The $4,500 figure comes from another private firm that would use different methodologies, and pleased that they'd be able to give us some pointed, more accurate results as well. I haven't asked those there because when we look at that $30,000 figure from BOSI's, that would be addable. And so we look at receiving approximately 50-plus percent of that money back in BOSI's aid next year, so when we look at the big picture cost, we're looking at a situation maybe approximately $1,600. So, no, we presented, the study presented eight different scenarios, and there's conversation, I think, for us to be had here. There's conversation that we have to start to think about how we want to move forward on this side. I don't think the conversation needs to happen in concert with the projection and enrollment data. I believe we can facilitate conversation. We can start to look what our comfort levels are, what our values are around programming. We can look at those eight different scenarios that are there, and we can begin to have conversations among the board. We can engage our administrators and staff in reviewing these different scenarios and providing feedback about the impact on program. We can look at scenarios that may not be present. There's opportunity here to pursue this work that's before us, and I think we could do a fair job of moving forward. But with that said, I think we need to have this conversation. I think we have to look for value where it exists in the study. There were disappointments there. There's clarity that we need, and I think the clarity can be had, but it's the approach that we want to take to get it, to still be able to answer this question that's before us. So I may have gotten a bit ahead of myself here, but I think where we go from here, I think we can still answer this question. I think that we can certainly look to develop confidence in our enrollment projections, and we can look at the different scenarios and develop an idea of what may be preferred to do this. We can begin to evaluate these preferred options, and we can begin doing so this summer, and looking at the administrative review of the different opportunities and challenges that are before us. We can start to engage the public in discussion at the board level, we can have community dialogue and a forum in the fall on these conversations. And then I think we have to responsibly weed it down to a couple scenarios that the board is comfortable in pursuing, and then work with Beverly and our architectural firm to start to spec out some of the challenges or costs that may be associated with some of these scenarios. As I said a moment ago, I see this as something that's doable. I think we shouldn't let a bad meeting and some confusing data get in our way. Let's clarify the data, let's refocus what our effort is, and let's come up with a plan and how we want to move forward. As a reference with respect to the long-range planning before, I think there's value in continuing the conversation, and I was going to give the ask to the board that we identify someone on the board that I can work closely with this over the coming weeks and month to try to make progress, to try to help make sense over what the data should be telling us, if there's a shift in these numbers that we should be looking at, and then to outline the process that we will proceed with in reviewing the different scenarios that may have been presented.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start off the conversation a bit, mainly because I've been chomping at the bit, having not been at a meeting last week, and missed the comment. You know, I was really, one of the, a couple of us that really forced the issue on doing the space utilization study early on, and the focus when we did this was not to determine as a matter of fact what our enrollment was going to be five years from now. The determination was, based upon the last few years of community members and people on the board, including myself, that we had not done in Irvington a proper space utilization study. There had been efforts to talk about people thinking of closing Main Street School, or doing other things with Dow's Lane. We thought about moving offices for Dow's Lane offices, into Dow's Lane, things like that, but we've never had a space utilization, a proper space utilization study done, so we thought it would be a good idea to do that. But again, the purpose was never to have an expert tell us what our enrollment was going to be five years from now, nor can that be the purpose currently, because with all due respect to every statistician out there, asking somebody what the enrollment in Irvington is going to be five years from now is the same thing as asking them what the Dow Jones Industrial Average is going to be five years from now. They might be able to give you a pretty good guess, they may be able to look at forecasts. People in Irvington will take you back to 1970 and tell you how many students we had then, and look at it now, clearly run a downward trend. I tend not to worry what the enrollment was in Irvington 30 years ago. I worry what it is now, and I worry what it's going to be over the next five years, and especially three years, which is what we're looking at for space utilization. I think that, so I do disagree with Dr. Harrison's thought that we should look for some definitive enrollment data that we could all agree on, because I don't think it's possible. I don't think it's possible. I think with all the data we have out there, no one is going to be able to tell us, nobody on the board is going to be able to say definitively what our enrollment's going to be over the next three to five years. I can tell you that I have my own personal feelings about what that is, and it has nothing to do with live birth rates in Westchester County. It's not live birth rates and a lot of the criteria for the projections that a demographer would need to use, because that's what they do to come up with their numbers. What Irvington is, and what it has become more so, is a hub for young families to move into the district. And so there, I don't believe that there is a statistician or a demographer out there that's going to be able to tell you too how many houses are going to sell in Irvington over the next three to five years, and the age of the children that are going to be brought in by those families. So if you're buying what I'm saying there, I think the focus, I will agree with Dr. Harrison, that the focus on the enrollment projections to drive us looking at whether we're properly utilizing our space is really a sideshow. What the board does know is that there is nothing definitive about our enrollment. We're not seeing drastic declines, we're not seeing drastic increases. We do know that the brokers all around town are telling us that more new families are moving in, you know, that houses are turning, houses are going above ask. We know that there's 50 new homes going, yeah, it's been about 10 or 12, John, over the last couple of months, have gone above ask. It's interesting, it's been, you know, but it's, you look, you made a face as if you didn't believe, but it's true.
No, I have my neighborhood for sure, unfortunately.
And there's, and I know there's 50 houses currently planned for development, most of which are aimed for well-to-do young families. So based upon the facts that the board has before it, I don't think we could make a, we can come to a conclusion realistically that we see a drastic downturn in enrollment over the next three to five years, nor do I think that we can come to the conclusion that we will see a drastic increase in enrollment of the hundreds of children over the next three to five years. I think that a reasonable summation is that we don't know how many kids are going to be there, but based on everything we know, I think it's going to be spiking, but I think our enrollment's going to stay fairly, fairly static over the next three to five years. I think that is, that is the most reasonable interpretation of not only the data we've seen, but also what we're seeing on the ground. But in any event, the board has the obligation to provide schooling for, no matter how many kids move into the district, and we have to be prepared for that. So what I want to suggest is that we can all have our views, and everybody in the community obviously expressed their views on enrollment projections, and how possibly, I heard that people say that the enrollment, the faulty enrollment projections, even though they're only projections and somebody's guess, somehow tarnish the rest of the report. But the rest of the report is really the bulk and the purpose of the report, which was to look at our space utilization and see whether we're doing things properly, whether there are ideas out there that we have not yet thought about, and I even heard at the meeting that community members came up with ideas that weren't even in the report. That was the purpose of the study, and I, it's disappointing that Dr. Saversky's bedside manner in the presentation was less than optimal, but I don't believe that we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater here, and I do believe that based upon what is in the report and based upon the data that we have, this board can make a reasonable conclusion as to giving the administration direction as to, for instance, what of the eight, or if we have any other ideas for space utilization, that we would want the administration to cost out for us. I mean, the biggest problem with the report, and it's not the report's fault, we didn't ask them to cost out those things, but, you know, none of the options make any sense if we can't afford it, or if the savings are not great enough, or if we have, you know, if we save $200,000, but our average class size goes from 20 to 30. Those things have to be weighed, and so I would hope that we could at least agree with respect to the enrollment projection, that we're never going to have any definitive answer to that, that we have to be guided a bit by what's happening on the ground and what we're seeing. I think we can come to a reasonable conclusion based upon that, and move forward in giving the administrators direction about costing out whatever options we then would want to present to the community as recommendations for consideration. I apologize for the long-winded nature of it, but it's been sort of building up, so please tell me why I'm wrong.
Well, I actually kind of agree with you. I think we have to put aside right now the conversation about enrollment, because I don't think we're actually all going to agree on that. But what I do think that this report did highlight, and very well, is analyzing our current space. There has been a feeling for quite a while that Dow's Lane currently can house two more grades right now, and this report absolutely told us there is no way that can happen. Short of us building and, you know, adding new additional space, that school's not big enough. Okay, going from there, I think now it's going to get a little tricky, because some of his scenarios are very interesting to me, but I think we are going to have to figure out what we can live with. For example, I would like to hear from building principals on the, their idea and philosophy around moving fifth grade up to the, up to the middle school. I know there are other districts that do that, hardly one of them, but that is a different way. That would also entail theoretically moving eighth grade up to the high school. You know, it gets very complicated, and I think, I think we do need to narrow down some of the scenarios, see what it, what the impacts are financially, but there's also going to, we also need to look at how it's going to lay out practically. Like, one of the things that the report highlighted is that if we move a grade up to the high school, middle school campus, that lunchroom is not big enough, does not have the hours in the day to feed a whole other grade. And it was an interesting solution he proposed. My personal take is not viable, but again, we need to flush it out. But I think there's going to be a lot more questions that we need to answer as a board and give the administration some guidance, in addition to just the money component, is, you know, there's going to be a big cultural change if we, if we, you know, some of these scenarios are proposing, and is that something that we want?
It's interesting, I was involved in a conversation, a week or so, with folks who really said something to me that I didn't really think about, and I'm starting to think, I think I may have related to Phil, or maybe you, Robin, that just in talking about Main Street School, you know, we've always focused on the effect of potentially closing Main Street School on exactly what you're saying, moving fourth grade here, moving fifth grade here. This was a person who owns a local business in town, and they said, you know, has the board really considered, we understand you folks are doing what's best for the schools, but have you seriously considered or factored in the impact that closing Main Street School would have on the businesses on Main Street? And how it would change the fundamental character, at least initially, depending upon what we did with the building or what have you, but still, to take all those parents away, the kids away from pizza places, the delis and all that, the bustle, have you considered the impact that would have on Irvington? Forget it from a facility standpoint. And these are things, I completely agree with you.
It had an impact on Main Street when that building was converted from middle school to fourth and fifth grade. The businesses took a hit in the area.
A big hit, yep.
Right. And I, you know, if we're going to pull it back, so I agree with you that this is...
There's a lot of layers to this.
There's many layers to it, and the community does have to get to a point of what we're willing to accept and what we want from our schools.
I completely agree with most of what you said, surprise.
Whoa!
In fact, my first thing is cost. You know, I thought a lot about the study, and it seems like at the point that we're at now, that we've been waiting a long time to understand really what are the costs, because ultimately, if there aren't significant savings, then nothing else matters.
You remember the meeting with Kathy, when everybody showed up at the high school auditorium, and they, because they were worried about closing Main Street School, and clearly a proper study wasn't done, it was sort of, and basically, I think somebody said, well, you know, the impact to you would be about, what, $14 a year?
$80,000 we'd save by closing the school.
And they said, you know, to the average taxpayer, it would be like 15 bucks or something. And the whole place, I think, wanted to just explode, like, why the hell are we even talking about this?
They got him walked out?
They got him walked out.
Well, yeah, and so, I mean, I think before we, you know, do anything else... Well, yeah, and so, I mean, I think before we, you know, do anything else-
What the heck?
Yeah, and, you know, and I, I know that they have said multiple times that, you know, we do have the expertise in-house to cost out these scenarios, so I, I definitely think that the next order of business is really costing out the scenarios, and I think then, to me, we should possibly narrow down the scenarios. Just because it's silly to cost out eight things, if it turns out that the cost doesn't make sense, then why bother doing eight? I mean, I think if we start with some reasonable number and then we kind of get a handle on what we're looking at, um, then it might make sense to pursue it further or not. And a little bit to your point, certain things like that cafeteria, clearly there wasn't a cost component in those studies, so by costing out something, one of those scenarios, we, we might have to delve a little deeper, but we might get a realistic view just from a financial perspective. And I think that could very well drive us moving forward.
Do you have any scenarios that you've focused on already, or?
Um, you know, I'm not, I, the ones he gave, no, I haven't personally sat down and checked them off, although I did personally like John's, Dawson had a suggestion as an alternative, because the ones that they came up with were pretty similar in terms of grades. I mean, you know, you got Dow's, you got Main Street, you shut Main Street early, Main Street opened, and John had a scenario, which I don't even know is viable, but he had said you bring pre-K, which would be Easter seals and kindergarten, to Main Street School along with the administration. And one of the reasons that I think it's interesting, I, I'll go, you know, who knows? But I think, um, kind of jumping-
There might be a, just off the top of my head, a continuity of service thing, because the same people who are dealing with the kindergarten kids oftentimes are dealing with the other grades, right? Even though-
Right, well, you have two grades-
Yeah, no, I get it.
He said other districts do it, but the interesting thing to me is one of the, one of the questions that I have is if, if we do this, I really think we need to be looking to something that we're going to keep in place for a longer period of time, since it's going to be very costly to, to do this. And I, as I mentioned last board meeting, I worry about those trailers, and I feel like it might be a little short-sighted of us to be pricing out options if most of them include keeping the trailers there.
I agree.
Because we have to house you guys somewhere, and maybe it's getting new trailers, or maybe, but I mean-
TPs.
Hey! But anyway, so, so that was, you know, as a start, you cost out the options, but I think there's some other pieces we might have to add in, in terms of cost, to make them viable. And again, I feel like every option that we go with needs to have a longer-term view as to, is this viable?
Completely agree.
And then doubling that back, whereas I agree the enrollment isn't going to drive this, I think the cost drives it now, but my view on the enrollment after thinking about this is not all that dissimilar to yours, but we're never gonna, I agree, we're never going to know the numbers, we don't have a crystal ball, I don't care who we pay or what they come up with, it's still going to be a projection. Um, but I think our biggest concern is that whatever alternative that we select needs to be able to handle the capacity-
Whatever happens, whatever happens.
At whatever happens in the future. So I think whereas we're looking at enrollment, perhaps what we need to be looking at is what is our peak? And I, I actually almost think that the way to do that, and, and this is just what I was, who knows if this is scientifically correct, but if you look at Irvington, it's very cyclical. Our population has been very cyclical over the past 50 years. And I think you could almost go to what's the peak on that, and then practically analytically maybe add a load factor to a lot of the new houses that are coming online. And so if you take the top that we're at, plus a load factor of new housing and, you know, and you come up with some, again, it's pie in the sky, but some high number, that we have to make sure that whatever alternative we undertake will be able to accommodate our peak, and I don't think we need to figure out what that peak is, or I don't, we need to figure out if it's low or higher, medium. I just think we cannot be in a situation where we move everyone around and then we run out of space, because that would be not great planning and not great for our cost structure.
We'd, we'd look awfully silly if we closed Main Street School and two years later had to buy modulars because we can't keep all the kids in our building.
Exactly. So, um, so again, I, I actually think we're all kind of taking along the same direction.
And, and, and also to reemphasize what you said, I too agree, we have to figure out what to do with the district offices, because clearly they cannot keep going, and none of the scenarios really address that, because fundamentally, he does not, the author of this report did not feel that he can advocate for using instructional space for administrative space, but that's an issue that we're going to have to, you know, deal with, and we might come to a different conclusion. But we do have to figure out.
Um, I think I agree with fans of what all of you have said, but not, um, including Bob. But, um, I think it's, it's, I think we're, we're doing the wrong thing if we're trying to search for some single projection to rely on, to base our planning on. I think that's, that's clearly a mistake. We, we have to recognize that our future enrollment fluctuates, it's uncertain, we don't know. Nobody, you're right. I mean, I agree with you in that we don't know what the, what the project, what the enrollment's going to be in five years, any more than we know what the Dow's going to be in five years. I'd probably rather know the latter, right? But, but they're, they're both, they're both pretty hard to predict. If you're looking at the stock market, there is a whole industry that deals with stock market uncertainty and how to deal with it, and how to trade out, and how to make money, how to, how to analyze that uncertainty. There are ways to look at, likewise, we, we ought to be thinking about enrollment as something that's fundamentally uncertain, recognize that it's uncertain. We can put, I think, some sensible bounds around the uncertainty. As Robin said, we ought to think about what our peak might be, but we also ought to think that we might end up being well short of that, and we might be paying, spending a lot more money just for the small probability of being able to cope with a rather unlikely peak, and that may not be worth the trade-off. And so, but I think we can think constructively about what the, the range of uncertain outcomes might be. I'm, I'm certainly not convinced when I see the Saverski come in with his top possible range be a drop in enrollment from where we are now, that, that means that we, we were up above that a couple of years, several years ago. It just, I'm just not, I just don't believe that it's not possible that we could be higher in the future. We might not be. I mean, Bob, you seem convinced we will be, but we, we might be. I'd say, I would just say we might be.
I, 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 you know, I, I really, I mean, my personal view is that I think we'll stay fairly constant-
Yeah.
-the next few years with a spike and a dip, sort of what we're seeing with Saverski.
Yeah, but, but I, but I think, but I think we're wrong if we're saying we know, we think it will be this, whatever it is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, we have to think about, maybe, maybe, what I would tend to like to see out of a space utilization setting, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, even if the baby is not what we all hope for. But, um, uh, ask, you know, let's say, why don't we consider something like the status quo enrollment, more or less with the fact that the cohorts are going to feed through? Something that's down, say, 15% from where we are, and something that's up, say, 15% from where we are, and see what, in those situations, what we would, what kind of, where we would want to be. I, I don't, by the way, think three to five years is a sensible, um, horizon. We, we should be doing that, considering, um, our needs out of a, a lot longer horizon than that. That's a really short horizon.
That's part of the problem.
The main issue, I think, that there are side issues like the, the trailers, um, but I think the, obviously, the main issue is, is whether it, it, whether it's feasible to close Main Street School and whether that would make sense, whether there'd be enough savings relative to the cost. I also agree that, that closing Main Street School and changing that who knows what would have a likely negative impact on the village, core part of the village, and we ought to be, you know, I don't know if it's our, our fiduciary responsibility to take that into account, but the community certainly should care about that issue. But that's the key issue, and I haven't seen a clear analysis of what either the cost or benefits of closing that school are, which I think are central to our analysis, or should be.
I actually agree with 99% of what John said. I think you summarized it very well in the sense that because the enrollment projections, using the methodology that Saverski used, are so uncertain, they've created a range which is essentially unacceptably wide, and then he himself, I think, at one point said, I, I don't know what's going to happen, anything could happen. And that sort of then threw all of his numbers under the bus. So I think that creating scenarios that seem logical and reasonable around where we are today, which is essentially taking that, the average number, and then using minus 15% and plus 15%, seems like as good as any methodology in terms of using that to create, um, scenarios that, that we can then test against some of the solutions that have already been presented. Personally, I favor, uh, the solution I think we should be looking at is moving one grade up to middle school and one grade down to Dow's Lane, and I actually favor, based on what I know about the cost, moving the district offices into Main Street School as a scenario, not as the ultimate option, just as a scenario for analysis, because the true cost savings comes from the personnel, not from anything else, from what I understand. The electric and the other operating costs that are not related to personnel are not significant. And unless we're going to sell the building, and no one has even discussed that as an option, and I don't-
It would require a vote.
And moreover, we probably wouldn't want to do that without a much higher degree of confidence that, um, our own plus or minus 15% analysis was a, was a good analysis. So I think from a straw man's standpoint, I think we should be asking our colleagues in the administration to focus on, on that scenario, but obviously, there's, you know, how many scenarios did he do? Eight?
Yeah.
I just happen to think that's the most reasonable one.
Yeah. I, I just got a tickler, if anybody was interested, that maybe somebody in-
I'm just picking my own one.
That, uh, Scarsdale, Elmsford, and Ryer Cliff, all the budgets passed, and that was all above the 2% cap?
No.
They're all under? They're all under?
Yeah.
Well, they all went under, if they didn't go for the second one to-
Scarsdale, Ryer Cliff, then.
Elmsford.
Sorry.
Um, question, and I think I answered the, asked this, but I'm not sure. If we close down Main Street to students and move the administration there, and let's say 10 years from now, enrollment is such that we need to move kids back into that school, are there any financial consequences, like, do we now need to, currently, the, the building, it's a very old building, doesn't meet current standards, and we don't have to because we haven't closed it down? If we move the kids out and then move them back, are we in a pickle? We are.
You then have to, um-
Make everything ADA compliant and everything else.
Everything to the regulations at that time.
That's a good question.
So John's scenario becomes more, the idea of moving, like, kindergarten in there-
If you keep a few kids in there, then you-
Then you-
And, and you certainly, I, I don't want to start to engage in, like, the, the pros and cons, or the challenges of each of the ideas, because obviously, we have a lot of thinking around that. The one area, and I'm seeing the direction we're going, and, and I think it's not too different than some of what I, I presented before, um, but the one thought, I understand, looking at, we're talking about thresholds, right? Where we're comfortable, how far we can go before we have to change our business. But the one thing I just want us to be mindful of, 15%. 15% may not play into the, any one given scenario. So if you see a decline of 15% in grades K through 2, so if we're looking at 1,800 students that decline 8, um, 15%, 270 students, you see a drop there, you can make a shift. But if you look at a 15% shift, decline consistently across all grade, grade levels, it presents a number of different scenarios and considerations. So for us to be able to turn and say that with 15%, then we would look at option A, B, and C as possibilities in how we would respond, understand that when you get to that point where you may see an increase of 15% or a decrease of 15%, the prescribed scenarios may not be realistic because of where that increase or decrease of student population may be.
Right, but I, but I think we really need to just start costing some things up before we get into that level.
It might, it might also be helpful, so I was just thinking about another thing that I forgot to say, it might also be helpful to ask the question, what, what would our enrollment need to look like for closing Main Street School to make sense? And then we can have a discussion of whether we were willing to bet on that or not.
Right. That's a good, that's a good, that's a good thought. I think, because-
And if, and if we think that's an unlikely scenario?
Well, I mean, in order to get there, though, we need to understand what's the cost savings of closing the school. I mean, because first you've got to be back calculation, and then you need to back into your, you're just changing the variable. It's the same basic calculation. You need to figure out what the savings are of closing the school.
Abs, well, yeah, I mean, if, if the savings are small, we publish it. If the savings are small from closing Main Street School, we maybe just ought to stop this conversation before we-
Exactly.
We haven't, we haven't really understood, we haven't understood if there's anything beyond eliminating a principal position in that. And I don't really even understand that, because I really don't, I, I get confused about what it's claimed the principals do. And I always, you know, when I hear Dr. Core speak, it is about principals being there to assure that, especially with APPR, to ensure that all the, all the teachers are doing the teaching job and observing them, and all those teachers are still going to be there doing the teaching job, they're just going to be arranged into different buildings, and I can't understand how we're going to do with fewer administrators under that situation. So, so somebody needs to analyze that.
Well, I'd like to have a good conversation.
It's an onion that keeps getting peeled back.
So can, can I, can I step back, and I think, are we, are we agreeing that we can put the enrollment conversation, generally speaking, on hold, where there's agreement that there's not a need to come up with any precise number that we can get five people to agree on, plus the rest of Irvington at this point? But the thought, but the thought is-
You can't get five people in Irvington to agree on what color the sky is.
I think that, that we come back and we start to, that we look, you, you look to us to work with our staff to begin to unpack the different scenarios, and then begin to consider other options that may be present, and look at the implications of, of the different scenarios to be able to lead us to the path of looking at which ones you would want to cost out.
Are we, do we even need, I mean, I, I just think some of them are so similar that if you cost out one, you might not, you know, I, I mean, I, I think we need to look at grouping. Maybe you want to give a suggestion for your four? I wouldn't spend a lot of time on it, I would maybe bet, should come up with, will these four make the most sense because they're the most different?
I, I agree with you. I think the four number, just in looking at it originally, I think there were four that all of us would pretty much say, this is, there's no, 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 no.
Yeah.
And then, and some of us would probably take that to five, frankly, but, but, you know, I think that if you could give us your suggestions, just high level on which ones we would, you would just take off, and we-
Well, I think off the bat, we could take off building up on Main, uh, Dow's Lane and moving both grades there.
Yeah.
Do we all agree on that?
I don't think we have that.
I, I, yeah, I think, I saw that, it's just not from a cost perspective, just being too-
That's not, so basically, all the other ones are splitting four and five.
Right.
And then, um, so do we look at splitting four and five and moving the district offices to Main Street? Is basically what we're looking at.
The Phil solution.
Well, well, do we also want, I think, should we also not, maybe we said this, but should we also not consider also splitting four and five, but not using the, not using the Main Street School site at all?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that, that's-
Exactly.
Until we can, until that building could find another use, either in, you know, as a district landlord or-
There's so much to this, I don't, because we could be with Main Street.
Although we, we would need to find a home for the district office, and that might just for the purposes of projection be putting the trailers in. I mean, just as a numerical plug or whatever, and then, um, not, you know, just, you know, just some cost associated with it.
Anything's better than the trailer we have now.
But I think closing Main Street, you could put trailers?
Winnebago.
Putting the district office-
We need to paint them at least, but, but I, I think we get the gist of, of the direction we're going, so what we're going to do is we're going to start to learn, look, identifying what those four or five will be, um, and start to look at some of the challenges there, recognizing that, you know, some of them, you think, well, the different implications for Main Street School, you got to consider, you know, do we lose Bosi's programs because we're not going to run a full-fledged program there, and then integration is gone, so all of a sudden, maybe there's a quarter of a million dollars of lost revenue there.
Right.
So, under, so what we're going to do, we're going to try to identify those four or so, and then we're going to look at implications for some of these to, to, to see realistically the feasibility of it, and then start to- And then start to take those and set the-
And I think, I think, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I brought you Chris, but I, I think for the community's sake as well, for our sake, obviously, too, and for your own sakes, you're, I think you'd be doing this, but similar to what we did with the budget, listing out the pros and cons of each, just so it's something that's readily understandable by people. Because the way I see it's playing out, if we get anywhere close to thinking about closing Main Street School, if the cost makes sense, it's going to become, I believe, a much larger issue with the grander community. And, and, and then I think the village will get involved as well, weigh in, so, you know.
I think we ought to include in some way the, it's easier to sort of do the kind of hard, you know, hard thing, the, the kind of almost quantifiable things, like, oh, we need to find space for this activity or that activity. But there's softer issues, like what, how do we, you know, like, having more services being done in our, if they're BOSI's type activities being done here in Irvington, maybe a positive thing. Having Main Street School is, it's, it's a soft thing, but I think that's a valuable thing to our, our kids and our community. And we don't, shouldn't give that up without a substantial savings. It shouldn't be even marginal.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I think, I think most of the community will-
It's not a situation.
Yeah, I mean, and my feeling also is, I think it's going to be an iterative process. And I think, um, you know, first pass, you guys will do a cost savings projections. And then I think, like, you know, maybe John will have, well, what about this cost? And so I, I, I wouldn't get too hung up in terms of time, I'm thinking. I wouldn't get too hung up on making it perfect the first time.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Because I actually think as we go through it together, we're all going to come up with new things to add and subtract and whatever. So I think it's just a question of getting the ball rolling is the most important thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I guess I just see a couple of, as I'm piecing this together in my mind, like, the process here and looking at identifying the four or five different options. Looking at what our, our pros and cons may be, being mindful of the softer items that John mentioned. Doing our rough estimates of savings, then maybe doing a walkthrough with our engineers and that. For them, if there's any big ah-hahs that stand out and say, heck no, this isn't an option because, or hey, this may be an opportunity because. Um, and then have that big picture conversation, and then we can look at starting to, whether we go to the next step, whether we look at, do we want the architects to start to really get into some of these potential renovations, so on? So I think in my mind, I see the pathway we're going with this. We'll work on it as a team, come back to you with, with the idea of the next steps. And of course, I'll, I'll shoot anything out as, as well as it comes.
I'm just, I'm, I'm smiling because it's, um, Raina just-
Because you're gone on vacation in two days, that's why.
Because what?
Because you're gone on vacation in two days, that's why you're smiling.
Yeah, Raina just had this, um, great initial technology meeting. And it's funny, because I actually think, you know, at some point, you could layer in the technology too, in terms of infrastructure. Like, is grouping certain grades going to make more sense as you look to the future of what our needs are, technology? I mean, I think you could go crazy coming up with the possibility, so.
I'll go crazy. No, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with the outcome, only because I think that, you know, we, we did this originally because, you know, we heard the public, especially with respect to Main Street, wanted us to really do the end to it. And look through these issues, I think, more on the path, if we're on the path. Um, I guess moving on, um, does anybody have anything? I guess we had no response. None of the community spokes, we have no responses for the community in thirteen point one. Does anybody?
Did we ask them?
Does anybody from the community have anything to say on anything they've heard? Sir?
Um, it sounds like we'll have this discussion many times, so I'll-
I'm sorry, if you could just say your name.
Yeah, sorry, Michael Hannah, South Park House. And, uh, it sounds like we'll have this discussion ongoing, so I'll get short, but really appreciate what John McComber was saying about the larger perspective. I'd also just say, uh, I really appreciate all the work you did on thinking about the budget, about putting education first. I'd be careful not to get stuck in, uh, swam around details versus thinking about provision and refining for future education. Does that hear a lot of, you know, I was listening to the budget, I've heard, you know, we tried to move a system principle from here to there. And I think we're, I worry that we can get two covered by half, which is something I heard the board say before. I worry that after this conversation, too.
Thanks. Um, okay, uh, our next meeting, it's always a, a fun one, because we have to do a lot of resolutions. Uh, it's the reorg meeting on Tuesday, July second. I would suggest so close to the fourth of July.
I don't think we're going to be able to do the reorg contracts if we can get them out.
Are we going to change, we, we usually do seminar meetings earlier? I don't know if that's the plan?
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, it's at six thirty. The reorg meeting starts at six thirty, followed by a regular meeting at seven thirty. Um, so hopefully that'll be, and we'll see what's on that. And, uh, I guess at this point, I'd like to get a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing employment history of particular persons, possible litigation, and contract negotiations.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thanks, everybody.